Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the first meeting of the Health and Environment Policy Committee for this new school year. The meeting is taking place from the Water Street in the Guild Hall in Winchester. The time is 6:30pm. My name is councillor Boris Ferguson and I am the chairperson of this council policy committee. Please can I advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website? So if you are joining us at home this evening, welcome to you also. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. I'm joined this evening by councillors Crumoeysen, Tukuper, Westwood, Williams, Walsh, Curran and Pearson. And I'd like to welcome particularly those new councillors who have just been elected for the New Vicente it's their first committee meeting. And I'd also like to thank councillor Williams and councillor Pearson for their continued service on the committee issue. I'd also like to thank the officers who are present with us this evening, Mr Botham, Mr Lincoln, Mr Robbins, and also our democratic services officer, Mr Cannon and Matthew, who's just came in for a moment. I believe that online we have Alex Ebo, our sustainability officer, who will support and ask when we need his help. We have three papers to consider this evening. And once the papers have been introduced, I'm keen to ensure that all members have a chance to both ask questions and to take part in the debate after the questions. So please can I ask you then as members, you make sure that you keep your questions short and that your points are succinct. That way we should be sure that everybody has a chance to ask the questions and to make the voice they want to. And as usual, what you do is you raise your hand and I will call on your intern to speak. And for the officers joining especially tonight, which I believe is only Alex Ebo, please can I ask you to move your mic and turn your camera off until we're called on? And finally, can I make please ensure that everyone has their mobile phones either switched off or at least turned to silence? So thank you, everybody, for being here. Most welcome and we'll move straight on to the secret items of the agenda. Do we have any apologies for deputy members?
Thank you, Chair. No apologies throughout the supremacy. All members are present, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first item is to appoint a vice chair. So this means we... Do I have any nominations for vice chair of this council?
Yes, you do. I'd like to nominate councillor Williams right here.
Thank you. Then the second councillor Williams?
Mr Chair, I'll be pleased to have second councillor Williams.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Shall I take it that councillor Williams is certainly elected as vice chair of this committee? Thank you, councillor Williams. For the benefit of everybody visiting at home, councillor Williams has just moved to the table to assist me and make sure I don't miss any hands when they're raised after questions. Okay, do we have any declarations of interest this evening?
I've received none, Chair. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, councillor Warwick?
Just to clear my role as Hampshire County councillor, executive member of the Environment to Hampshire.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't have any chairperson's announcements as such, but I will make some comments before we look at the work plan for the year. We've obviously all had minutes from the last meeting. Can I take that those minutes are agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you. And we now need to note the dates for future meetings. Obviously, we are now 6th of July, a firm meeting on 30th of September, then another on the 7th December, and then all the way through to the 2nd of March next year. Well noted. Thank you. I don't believe there is any public participation tonight?
None, Chair, no.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is to note the work plan for this committee. And as I said, I do have a couple of points to make about this. I hope everyone's had a chance to have a look at the work plan. And before I take any comments, there are a couple of things. You'll note that in the past, we've often had an update on the carbon neutrality programme, sort of in its entirety at this committee on a regular basis. And what I ask for this year is for us to be able to look in subsequent meetings at a different element of the carbon neutrality plan on a thematic basis. So for example, in September, we'll be looking at transport related policies; in March, energy generation related policies; and in July, housing property related policies. I'm hoping by looking thematically that this will allow us to look in more detail at those specific policies that bring forth, which will allow us to actually make the carbon reduction that we do need to do. And in addition, for the September agenda, there is an additional agenda item, which would be a six-month review report on the Winchester Sports and Leisure Park. The impact it's having on sports and the wellbeing across the district, particularly amongst harder-to-reach groups. What plans the operators have to ensure that we increase this inclusivity? I don't know whether officers will be able to include a similar report in that for medicine?
I could certainly say that back, Chair, just by my way of commenting. And I'm aware that Cabinet have determined a draw for medical legislation. It's just important that we don't end up duplicating it on this one. But that's the same report we've tried for whatever, but I've got to confirm that on some leadership in that type of stuff. But yeah, if we're doing the medicine, then there is our book to be in.
Great. I think it's important for this committee to have a chance to look at the impact that the sports and leisure centre is having on the community, and I have already spoken to councillor about that, so thank you, Stephen. And I also was approached by... Sorry. The other point I wanted to make was that councillor Pearson had written to me on behalf of the Conservative members of this committee to ask that we bring a paper to the committee on the broader issue of inequality across the district. His particular concern is around our monitoring of the small particular matter, the energy grid life in the city as well as in certain market towns. Again, I have spoken to councillor Murphy about that, as a climate member, sorry, the Cabinet member for the Climate Energy Agency, and also with Mr Ingram, who is our officer leader, and may be considering ways that we can bring that paper forward. So that has also been done. Are there any other points that anybody would like to raise about the work plan, or are we happy to approve it? Can you see the hands? Let's see if we have hands there. Therefore, can I ask?
Sure. Do we take it there will be a paper by a committee come forward this year?
So I'm waiting for councillor Murphy and councillor Ingram to come back to me with when or back with how my help.
As I said, my last two, in the light of what we're pretty sure is going in Environment Bill under King Edward, about inequality concentrating on particulars. First of all, a question, I don't think we actually measure them in Winchester. It's a big gap there, and I fear we should give a paper as to how we're going to deal with that.
As I said to you, councillor Pearson, I'm concerned about this, as you are, and I know I'm also a committee member of this very committee to your scope, it's something I was raising. I was saying that councillor Murphy may want to add something, but she's equally concerned. And it is interesting to note that in the recent case of the death of the nine-year-old Ella, I do can't see Deborah, I apologize if I've said that wrong, that Cora noted that there is no safe limit for air pollution in the air. So we know how important it is, but councillor Murphy, would you like to comment at all?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm very concerned about particulars. And we do actually measure them at the moment, but we will be extending the number of monitors we have. And we are very active in the pay this committee each year.
I think that is important, particularly as governors are beginning to comment on air quality and impacting people's death. At present, we're only talking about a statistical 40,000. Now we're getting people saying that air quality is a contributing factor. That is the key phrase, and I think we should take that, or at least prepare to take that. I understand we can't do it overnight financially or indeed equipmentally, but it is certainly something I fear this council should take in mind.
Thank you, councillor Pearson, and thank you councillor Murphy for confirming that we are doing that. So that will be added to the work plan we need to cause at the critical point. Are we happy therefore to read the work plan, sorry, councillor Crumoeysen?
Yes, sorry about that. And this is a question that might reveal my naivety about these proceedings, but the work plan looks great as far as I'm concerned. But I have a question really around camp. Is it possible to review this at each session and potentially request changes for the future? Or is this the work plan for the whole year, or is it for the whole year?
So the work plan we definitely would review. For example, I note that the community wellbeing strategy is due to come back to this committee in draft form at the March meeting. That currently isn't on this work plan. So certainly it will be reviewed. What we have to be conscious of though is there is only so much this committee can get through properly in the amount of time, and so officers, we want them to spend their time doing work as opposed to simply writing reports to this committee. So there's a balance to it. Would you add anything to that?
I'm going to go with the point about the impact on officers, but no, the work plan will be on every agenda. It would be good practice to review that and reschedule reports if that's required.
Okay, so are we happy with the work plan? Can I take it that that's agreed? Yes, thank you very much, everybody. So moving on to our first, our second item on the agenda, the community and wellbeing strategy. I'm welcoming this paper this evening, and I would ask all members on the committee to note the specific points that we as a committee are being asked to comment on in the recommendations, which is on page 14 of the report. So would either councillor Clear, as a Cabinet member of the community's wellbeing, or Mr Lincoln like to introduce the paper for us, or both? Councillor Clear, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair, and fellow councillors and officers. We are very pleased to be able to present this report to you this evening. A report regarding community and wellbeing strategy for the district that was presented to this committee in March 2020, as the report states. But when the work was about to commence, COVID-19 meant our time was needed in helping to support communities through this difficult and worrying time. In doing so though, we have learnt a great deal by being very active and working even closer with communities and businesses all over the district. The vital role of the community well played during COVID was absolutely fantastic. And I do know that in my village of Wickham, everybody came together and helped each other. It was absolutely fantastic. It was vital, and I know all communities have done it. It's not just about market towns and villages, it's about the city and all communities, because without our communities coming together and working together, we'd be in a very starry, sorry state. So, and I must say that when I was offered this portfolio, I was absolutely delighted. But I'm going to hand over now to Steve Lincoln, and I'm sure he would like to add a few things. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clear, good morning, Chair. So as councillor Clear mentioned, amongst all the difficulty of the COVID-19 pandemic, the response to it has demonstrated the care and support of the resilient nature of our communities. This is a huge strength that reaches the district, and it's vital to sustain wellbeing of those people within it. The report summarises some of the evidence that tells us what communities need to thrive or flourish, as we use in the report. And experience shows that we're clearly starting from a position of strength. But the council's got a key role in supporting our communities through difficult times, unlocking their potential, ensuring that no one gets left behind. This strategy should aim to ensure that that's the case. Collaboration with a wide range of power agencies is essential to make the most of our limited resources and brings with it great experience and a range of perspectives. This collaboration has always happened, but the COVID-19 response seemed to refocus efforts and really highlight common aims and shared objectives that we and our partners have. Parish and town councils are central to this collaboration, as described in the report, and the strategy aimed to reinforce the ways in which the council can work alongside them. Conversely, Winchester itself, the vision for Winchester recently published, sets out how people power up and be central to the future. Different communities may need different solutions, but the principles need to be fair and consistent. The proposal reads that this strategy takes its lead from existing strong evidence, to evolve alongside the vision for Winchester and local plan, to respond to the needs of communities as they emerge from a challenging year. The timescale proposed is one which allows communities to be involved in the development of the strategy, but avoids further lengthy and potentially unnecessary consultation and the risk of consultation fatigue that comes with it. Importantly, it's also a timescale that is achievable given the competing demands on officers that have already been mentioned. The strategy that follows won't provide solutions to all of our community's challenges, but it should help them to be better placed to respond to those challenges and play a great part in finding the solutions. So in conclusion, the committee's asked this evening to note the evidence we already have and the suggested timescale for the work, but also to comment on the approach to handle the report. In particular, the importance of consistent and equitable principles as the basis for our support for communities, the aspiration to see all communities display their characteristics for a flourishing community, prioritising broad support on activity that supports those who are most affected by inequality and disadvantage, and how the community response to the COVID pandemic should and could inform the emergency strategy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Chair, and thank you, Steve, for that introduction. So we have the opportunity now for any members of the committee to ask questions on the strategy. Who would like to start us off? Councillor Tukuper, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I really do welcome this report and both strategy. One of the most uplifting things, I think, in the past 80 months has been the community response to the pandemic. And so it's really great that we are giving something to harness and retain that community spirit and also be enhanced and taken forward. You know, even if you look at sort of the community responses from organic and growing groups like Winchester, we just serve as a Facebook group, a handful of people, a group of 3,000 members, to establish community groups and charities like Year 12, so a Sharm in Winchester that this goes on, really importantly engage all of those organisations in this strategy. And on that, my question is really, one of the things I think is quite important here in order to ensure that we do get views from across the district is to ensure that we have an effective mechanism to engage those groups. And so what I want to know is whether the possibility of a forum akin to the one that we are proposing later in the Climate Change Agency is suitable for this strategy. Mainly to be acting as an oversight organisation for the strategy and also an expert panel provider of input to how we deliver it. Because it's those community groups and charities that are up front buying coal facing community action. And it's important we have the council acting as a coordinating organisation for those bodies. So that's my question, whether it would be possible to set one of those up?
Thank you, councillor Tukuper. Anything you want to try on for that? Or would you prefer to, councillor Clear?
I could certainly have a go, councillor Clear. He's certainly outside of this.
I was just going to say that I don't see any reason why not. We can work with all kinds of stakeholders, parish councils, community centres, everything, but I let Steve speak as well.
That's great, because that was pretty much going to be my response as well. So absolutely, it could happen. I think what we need to have a think about would be whereabouts in the process that we set out in the report that would fit. It's kind of two stages where I envisage just engaging. One, right at the start, in a bit of a light touch, kind of self-assessment type of exercise in terms of just getting some of our communities to give us a bit of a judgement as to where they feel they are on that scale of what's a flourishing community. But then a more formal kind of consultation process once we've developed a draft strategy. So I guess it could fit in either place. It'd be something for us to go and just have a little think about where it would fit most appropriately and also where that could still fit with the timescale and allow us to come back to this committee and obviously to Cabinet where necessary. The other thing we obviously need to think about would be how we make a sort of representative but manageable group of people. I'm sure it's doable. So and we can certainly think of thoughts of that, so absolutely.
So thank you, Chris Lincoln, and thank you, councillor Clear. I also just wanted to comment on one of the lines that really struck me on the paper is when you said it's important that the strategies speak to the communities. So I think they're important as we go through, which really helps with that endeavor. Sorry, councillor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so it's welcome paper, but I think we've got to admit the council, even with the emergency planning system that was quite clear in place, county-led, but obviously we are part of that emergency planning and had to do a very great deal of capture. What was noticeable, certainly as far as the Irish were concerned, is how neighbours, volunteer groups within the villages and the parish councils had to step forward very, very quickly. Certainly, as far as parish councils, they're not quite used to doing that, but they took it up very, very quickly. And I think a great deal of praise should go to them. Similarly, the churches, and I say that in plural, did a great deal of work organising voluntary groups that weren't formal, but getting community, local community, I'm talking about a street length type of community or a housing estate type of community, getting them together. This is the first time our emergency planning system has had a pandemic to deal with. And the irony was that there was a trial back in 2016. And I regret to say this, but I could see in my own village, I couldn't see any impact, that we'd actually learnt anything from that pandemic trial back in 2016. And this is why everybody was doing a lot of capture, and I'm going to say, including ourselves in the City Council. I don't think any of us quite answered space how severe it was going to be. A lot that the communities forced, and they're still fighting, and we're just accepting it actually exists. But of course it did. But certainly the village, and I'm pretty sure the communities within Winchester, made very sure through the neighbours that there weren't any gaps left. You could range it from picking up prescriptions to increasing donations to your food banks, to creating your volunteer groups, to looking for guidance through the City Council where to get help and how the money from the government would be channeled through to not just parish councils, but not City Councils, but also parish councils and the volunteer groups. And there was a bit of, sorry, Richard, there was a bit of snow was there, and I can't say I agree with the decision, but we got there.
Councillor Pearson, is this a question?
I'm understanding, I don't have a sense now of speaking.
So was there a question on the background?
I mean, what we can ask a question as well, I thought we were into today.
No, we are, we are right.
I'm saying for what Steve suffers, we talk now. The question is, do you not agree churches and parish councils were very quick to step forward to organise things at the village level?
So I think that one of the things this paper actually does is acknowledge that very much. It also points to, if I may, Mr Lincoln, it also points to the fact that we recognise through the response to the COVID pandemic that not all community groups, not all parishes were as one equipped or as one aiming to respond as quickly as others. So we had some that were streaks ahead. I have to think of Bishop's Wharton, their response was very fast. We have other areas where it was hard for them to get things together. So I think one of the things you want to do in the strategy, Mr Lincoln, is to address that there's inequality between the people who are enabled to respond to community needs. Would you like to add anything, councillor Clear?
I think, councillor Clear.
Your hand, take it off.
I was just going to, all I was going to add was a thoroughly support of councillor Pearson said in his debate, and the churches as well, which I did overlook when I started speaking. They were absolutely fantastic, and it is still going on, still going on. Thank you.
Steve, would you like to add anything?
Only really to echo what you've said already. It's absolutely right, the response from communities themselves was incredible. It provided support that there's no way we as a council could have provided as quickly, as responsively, and in the way that they understand the needs and requirements of the people who live there, which is, I guess, I think that whole pandemic has really been a really good representation of everything that this paper, this strategy is trying to achieve. Those issues of the deficit, the participative deficit in some of these communities and their ability to respond and react has always been there. And I suspect that the communities who struggle to respond to COVID are some of the ones who we maybe found struggled to respond to other issues in the past as well. This has helped to kind of really crystallise and demonstrate that. And so, yeah, that's certainly, I think what we'd like to do is make sure we try and reduce that deficit and focus our efforts where they're mostly with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And again, I note at the beginning of the paper, you explicitly say that you want to learn from us on the pandemic. So Lord forbid should we find ourselves here again, and we will respond even more quickly than that. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Carr.
Thank you very much. There we go, I've used this technology. Yeah, again, a really fantastic porto, very much welcome. And it was great to obviously see that we're going to learn from what's happened with COVID over the last year and a half. But is the strategy also going to be taking into account the effects of COVID on a prolonged period? Obviously, you know, with the fact that restrictions are starting to ease. I watched the programme the other day, and it showed images of that lockdown right at the very start. That already seems so long ago that the roads were empty. And I know it's a very easy trap to fall into, that we get back to normality and we forget the effects and everything, we didn't do all that hard work. You know, as I've seen already with friends and colleagues, that there are lots of hidden effects to COVID long term, just like long COVID, but with mental health and things going forward. Is that going to also be part of the strategy, that there is going to be a section of a continued effort towards COVID as well as learning from those lessons? But that support will continue to those that will be affected on a longer term basis?
Yeah, I think it definitely should do. I think, you know, there are short term and long term impacts. Some of it relates to COVID, some of it relates to other demographic issues, other disadvantage, other inequality. So absolutely, I think this needs to be a strategy that sets out some principles which apply now, but really would apply into the future once COVID is beyond gone.
And councillor Weston? Sorry, councillor Weston, Westwood, even.
Thank you, Chair. I also welcome this report. It's a great initiative and it's great that we're taking it forward. And from my personal perspective, it was so great the way the community pulled together at the beginning of this pandemic. But what I will say is that whilst I know more neighbours now than I ever did before, we support each other, some of that support is slowly drifting away. And in section 2.1, you say that it's important to capture the positive feelings and outcomes that resulted from the pandemic. And I also note your timetable, you talked about delivering the strategy and so on. Could you just comment on how we can capture those positive feelings and not wait to lose too many and actually try and take the good things that we see, the non-intentional things that we see, and try to spread those out sooner and earlier?
I think that work's already happening, already ongoing. Obviously, this strategy sets, kind of formalises as much of what we've been doing over the last 12 months and not beyond that to be fair. So this isn't work which would wait until the strategy's approved. I think what the strategy will do, we'll be learning from it as we go. Obviously, we're getting full feedback from the committee tonight, we're seeing with our various stakeholders, we've been doing that for the last 12 months specifically around COVID and how we respond to that. But we've also been doing that previous to that as well. So I think we're trying to learn all the time. I think there's a danger already which applies to this work and the positive kind of community element and probably applies a bit to some of the climate stuff which we're going to talk about later, where I almost worry a bit, we've already missed some of the positive learning because, you know, I agree with you that we very quickly revert back to the way we've always done things, even if we maybe take the opportunity to reflect on that. And even though some of our behaviours may have reverted back, we can possibly just capture and remind ourselves some of those positive things and make sure they're not lost completely. So that definitely needs to be part of this work. I think it's part of the work that, as I say, is happening on an ongoing basis. Some of the things over the last 12 months, there was some of the work tying in with the Mayor's Awards that were very much focused around COVID and some of the positive things and celebrating and recognising those people. And there's more of that that we need to do as well. So, yeah, I agree completely.
Thank you. Councilor Pearson, quickly, a second. I'm not quite sure whose hand is up first.
I think it might be Councilor Pearson.
I'm very happy to defer.
Councilor Pearson, it looks like you're... No, I believe it's a silly question. I'm trying to...
I do have a question. Sorry, Councilor Pearson. So no, my question was, just drilling down a little bit, in paragraph 2.13 about grant support being another way in which councils build capacity of communities. And I think one of the ways in which the councils showed real agility and effectiveness during the pandemic was the swift grant support it gave to community organisations. And City Council really deserved a lot of praise on that because there's a lot of great dialogue between community groups and charities that were sort of calling out for help and the council being there still had the courage to provide it. Going forward, I think one of the sort of issues that's been raised with me is whether the grant support structures are there in place at the council, but whether there needs to be a bit more focus on advice to community organisations, charities about how best to access grants. There's a lot of expertise in the council about grant applications, what a good application looks like. And that sort of expertise can be a real benefit to particularly embryonic community groups that are starting out. I think the council has a part to play to be able to help organisations in that process. So the question is really, is there scope to include some of the vision around grant, grant giving, knowledge and experience dissemination?
Just before you ask that, Steve, I know with crowdfunding platform that we do offer training support, don't we, to a range of community groups? They can get to that before they climb. Is there something separate or clearly connected in with that?
I think it certainly could be connected. Crowdfunding, I think we see now as, if you like, one of the tools at our disposal in terms of our ways to support communities. There's some specific support that's available around crowdfunding, potential applicants of crowdfunding, because it's a relatively easy way of doing things. It's something that a lot of people won't experience having to do. And the organisation who we contracted to run the crowdfunding platform for us was very clear that from their experience, people who were given a bit of advice and helping hand, had to almost run the campaign, were the most successful. So that's why we included that as part of the contract. So that continues and that is still there. And there's a number of those, there's about three of those sessions, I think, that happen each year. So that's certainly something that we continue to push. I very much felt that crowdfunding was going to be one of the things that would be a real help to organisations coming out of the sort of the COVID pandemic. Just as an example, theatre ran an amazingly effective campaign and raised a lot of money to really help them through their difficult times. Not enough organisations in my mind have come forward to try and use it in that way. So it's something we continue to try and push. And now that a lot of organisations unfortunately almost mothballed during for a period, and a lot who would have looked to raise funding for certain activities didn't want to because they didn't really know what the future was going to look like for them. They didn't know what the future of their organisation, they didn't quite know what their clients and customers and members were going to be looking for from them. So I'm really hopeful that in the coming period that that activity and work will start again. In terms of the advice and support, we do create an organisation called Community First, who is there to provide that kind of support and advice to people. Interestingly though, that contract comes to an end at the end of this calendar year. So one of the things we're going to have to do over the coming months is having a look at what sort of support and advice we need for organisations going forward. We can definitely take something from this exercise and the engagement we have with organisations. I think we're probably going to want to do some separate consultation with some of our industry sector organisations as well about the very specific support that they want. And it might be that the future of that contract looks a little bit different, but absolutely really good to get that feedback. And it's certainly something we can build in here because I think that funding is a really key element in how we empower the whole capacity of that news.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you for raising the point, Councilor Pearson. But I know speaking to one particular community organisation, that they simply didn't apply for any of the funding that was available because they didn't feel any skills to do that. So, you know, that is a shame. One of the recommendations that we specifically asked to comment on was the prioritising of grant support to actively support those people most affected by inequality and disadvantage. The question I have, if I may, is do we actually have a current analysis of our grant funding and how it's spread across different, you know, geographical spread or geographic spread type of activity group? In the sense that if we're saying we want to prioritise it, is it something we're currently doing? Was there definitely a shift needed?
I think maybe a small shift. We definitely have information on the geographical spread of the support. That was included as part of the last time that the three year kind of core grant funding was allocated. And we brought a report to Cabinet, I'm trying to think when it was now, maybe September, last year, which updated in terms of some of that information, some of the outcomes. So geographically, we have it. We also have a fairly high level analysis of whether it's supporting older people, younger people, that kind of level. I'm sure we could drill down a little bit more. And if we really wanted to get into some of the number of disadvantage and inequality, we probably need to drill down a little bit more, but I'm sure we could do that. The main reason that it was included as one of the things was to look at in the strategy is, you know, we'll be aware that the council will face financial challenges. We'll be coming to the next three year round of allocations early next calendar year. And I suspect there'll be pressure on the grant budget and we'll have to look and make some quite hard decisions about how we allocate it to get the best value and support to people who need it the most. So the point that I think there was really to just get a sense of if members supported, if they're when pushed onto each other, if we have to make some hard decisions. That's one of the key things we should look to make to base our decisions on. So.
Thank you. Councilor Pearson. Sorry, Councilor Pearson, because I turned my head to listen to you, Steve.
No, it was just coming back to the grants as well, but Steve practically recovered it very well. Apart from Community First, in other organisations, we are in collaboration with parish councils and the voluntary sector. So we're with them all the time and talking and communicating. It will continue to be like that as well. Thank you.
Just before we move into debate, Councilor, did you have any specific questions that you wanted to ask?
Thank you, Chair, for asking. I think it's a really interesting thing. So well done, Steve. I just wondered, I was wondering, did you make some connection during the COVID crisis with groups that you've not reached before and whether you will continue that partnership work?
Yeah, absolutely. Both in terms of, if you like, some of the agencies who are out there, who we probably should have been working much closer with, but for whatever reason, we just haven't. It's already been mentioned about the churches and actually we made some really strong bonds with the churches. We just, Dyce, we worked really closely with them, we're continuing to meet with. And I think probably we have a shared better understanding now of what each other's doing and actually how similar some of our objectives are in terms of what we're trying to achieve. But also in terms of the actual organisations and groups out there, absolutely. I think we just, mutual aid was already mentioned. Obviously, we didn't work with them much before because they didn't exist. They came about in a very, very quick space of time. It's a really interesting exercise in our thinking. We're very much, and I think it's a traditional local authority way of thinking, we very much, we know who we know, we trust who we know. There happens to be a bit of a change in emphasis there, a bit of a culture shift in a group of people who we didn't know, who we couldn't really vouch for, but who we knew were off into a really valuable thing on a significant scale or in an area where it was really needed. And they become a really important part of the fabric of Winchester. And I think they will continue to be that. So there was lots of similar activity across some of the other areas. We were made a step removed from in some parts of the district where such a huge district, we very much had to rely on that kind of network. And that's where the parish town councils came in really strongly. And actually, a lot of those very local groups and that local activity, they lived with contacts. So we weren't directly involved, but we're aware now of the huge network that's out there, which we maybe weren't aware of before.
Thank you, Steve. If we are ready to move into debate on this paper, can I ask you, when we're going into debate, whether we can specifically look at those issues that we have been asked to look at? So for example, you know, are we sort of content that the focus should be on ensuring that all communities display the characteristics of a flourishing community, which is detailed under section 2.8, as identified by the research done by Winchester University? The importance of consistent ethical principles upon the basis of all support to communities. We've already mentioned the prioritising of grant support to the most affected by inequality and disadvantage. And also, I think we have already suggested, we agree with this, that the pandemic, the strategy takes into account the learning points from the local community response to the COVID pandemic. So if we're going to move into debate, I think Councilor Pearson, you're ready to go.
Time limit, remind myself. Yes, I mean, it can't answer really whatever has been said. And I think the focus of the questions have revealed a lot of what we've learned. And it's that's the important thing, Steve, yourself just said this, discovering networks we didn't know existed. I think it goes back down to the emergency planning gap kind of cause. Gold was there, silver was there, but bronze wasn't. It took us all by surprise. And largely because the parishes had never been asked to do this sort of thing. So there was a lot of groping around, what do we do, what do we do? And they were brought forward by a number of volunteers, certainly the Hamilton Chase, the Swanmore Hamilton, where volunteers came forward and basically pushed parish councils into a degree of coordination. And that, when it came down to the grants, as we had questions about, that was felt, I think, by the City Council and perhaps the County Council as well. Because the parish councils and the local members knew what direction to push the questions to get this sort of information. There were gaps, of course there were gaps, because we're all playing a new game. You know, at any level, playing a new game. I remember one of the things I learnt in emergency planning college was that there are some emergency events that don't just happen, clear up, and then be gone in three or four days. There are some that take years. And I think one example, if I may dwell slightly about this, it is relevant, was where a builder pierced a gas main. And we were posed the question, how long would it take to clear everything up? And everybody in there, some were gold members, some were silver members, and myself, I guess, a peripheral silver member, I think I would have been, as Angela's doing now, we said, oh, for about a week. In actual fact, the answer was five years. Now, that's something I don't think yet we've realised about COVID. This is not just going to disappear on the 19th of this month. It is going on, which means that the parish councils, particularly, and then voluntary groups have got to stay active. And yes, the prime minister said we all have to take our responsibility, of course you do, you always have had. But it is something that nears channeling, Steve said this, to keep these networks alive. Some of which, that's why I said, didn't exist before this, they reform very, very quickly. And I think that is the crucial thing. If we're going to learn anything, if we're going to talk the theory that the universities come up with, bring that to practical reality, it pretty well is. It's just a language, it's used, they ain't got to think about this. Because the more I've had that council papers for years, what, who's this paper designed for? Because I personally don't understand the council speak, even those who've been in the council for a number of years, perhaps might say too long. But can you see what I'm getting at? That gap of voluntary activity and requirement to the parish councils to do things that had never been asked to do before, because that's not within their brief. But it is now, but it wasn't. We talked about all the spaces, walking of this sort of thing, a recreation. Suddenly, they got emergency planning par excellence. And I think that has got to be fostered when you're talking about market towns, you're talking about the small villages, you're talking about the communities within Winchester itself. We really must not let that ball be dropped.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Pearson. And I would certainly say that during the pandemic, in my role as the cabinet member at the time, the partnership meetings that we had with parish councils or market towns were vitally important in terms of our economic response, but certainly the community response as well. I do apologise, I'm never in debate, but one of the questions I meant to ask was, we talked about a strategy, is it a five year strategy, a two year strategy? The report doesn't actually say, it just says a strategy.
That's a very good question. I'm not sure I've actually given much thought to that myself. That's probably something we need to get some thought about as we engage with our people and work out how, isn't it? Yeah. No, I obviously don't have the answer to that right now, but I will make sure that's something we turn our mind to.
If perhaps you could give a response at some point to the question, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to, sorry, would like to debate? Councilor Pearson, quickly, that's a hand.
Yeah, just pick up on some of the things that Councilor Pearson says, or simply for what he says. I mean, the question is, how do we keep the networks alive and described? And we mentioned Winchester Mutual Aid. There's a group of 3,000 people who signed up to a Facebook page essentially. And there's, I mean, I was one of the administrators on the group and there's different levels of interaction you have from members on that group. But at any given time, there's several hundred people, particularly at the beginning of the pandemic, who were doing things in their local communities. And then what happened is, is the group was very, very successful in doing some very direct neighbourhood, by neighbourhood based support for people in those early months. And the council sponsored them a lot, and the community groups sponsored them a lot. Then what seemed to happen was there was a sort of, an evolution of very local WhatsApp groups, where, and I suspect, you know, WhatsApp as a social media platform, which has proved to be very effective as communication to all the most different communities. And so I suppose the challenge is, is, you know, how do you engage? And so I suppose the challenge is, you know, how do you engage people who are willing to volunteer when required to? But as the pandemic subsides and things become more manageable, how do you harness that spirit, people being willing to volunteer for the future? And it's crucial, it's this debate for a reason, I don't have an answer, I don't have a question. But I think Council Pearson has identified a real issue there, that we need to sort of see if we can, as the council look to address. I suspect one of the mechanisms is again, is sort of a forum of community groups and trying to include key volunteer groups within that. And ensuring that, I noticed that the council's sort of stepping up this role around obtaining communication officer support, things like that, and looking at how we can maybe harness the role within the councils on the communication level to engage volunteers, so.
I think the point's well made, but I suppose one of the issues that we have as a city council is that, you know, how big of a steering group then have to be? And maybe it speaks to what Council Pearson was coming to on, about how we enable the parishes perhaps, and all the town councils to actually do some of that work for us, because they're much more local, much more closer to those community groups. And again, the churches and other community groups that maybe have more contacts into those smaller groups and then to use that as a pyramid to feed information up, but also feed information down. So I think that, you know, one of what she made in the strategy is, we need to be enabling, we can't do everything. And I think that maybe that's something we need to, we need to consider. It would be difficult to learn with WhatsApp groups, might have to contact them, I have multiple WhatsApp groups. In our WhatsApp group, my street, biggest news at the moment is there's a tortoise that keeps going rogue. So the community spends its time looking for the tortoise. I think Chris, you're on the same WhatsApp group. Okay, so Council Kieran, what would you like to add to the debate?
Yeah, it must be a bit like a Council Tippock Cooper, it's kind of one of these thoughts, I guess it's more of a debate rather than a question I'd be asked to, but I think when we're looking at a one-point CLT prioritising that support, that supports activities most affected by inequality and disadvantage, I think one of the things that I noticed in lockdown, I did some volunteering with a few food banks, was the dependency that so many people in our community have on those food banks, which was quite staggering. Because I guess it's easy to just presume that, you know, Winchester is an affluent area and actually not many people need food banks, but the Meon Valley Food Bank, who are currently based in British Wharton, did a fantastic job. And when speaking with those, the vast number of families that were really dependent on that support was incredible. I'm saying incredible, it's not really right, well, it's just astonishing, really, that many people were in that much need of support. I guess it's something with this strategy is, these organisations like food banks, for example, we want those to be a stepping stone, not something that people become dependent on. Is that something, I guess, I guess is a debate rather than anything, is how we enable those organisations to be a stepping stone and not to become dependency for those people, the communities who can really help them going forward.
Thank you, Council Kieran. And I don't know whether this link might want to comment on the new community pantries, which are a slightly different concept to a food bank, which show allowing people to have more agency around food choices. I hope to comment some.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Yeah, the food pantries are exactly that. And Council Cooper knows as well, because one of them was basically in the 12. So, you know, they're an example of that, where the food banks are, if you like, your crisis point. People who have no other option, nowhere to turn. And the pantries have really kind of emerged as an idea, which kind of fills the gap and helps people transition from that into a more, I suppose, more mainstream shopping experience and food experience. So it starts to support them, but give them some independence in addressing the deal with some of those issues. So I guess it's exactly the kind of principle I think the strategy's about, which is about focusing on disadvantages, but helping our communities to help themselves, which is exactly what the pantries are doing, you know. So it's not us doing it, it's us enabling people through our support, our advice, networking, bringing them into contact with other people who are doing stuff that's really good. So yeah, perfect example of what I guess what we hope to achieve.
And please, Council Warwick?
Yes, you've got Warwick, Westwood and then Council Clay.
Okay, so I'm just going to say that time is moving on, so we'll go through this loop and then we'll have the new ones.
Yeah, just really quickly, Chair, just to begin the debate, looking at the prioritising grant support. And just as slightly external to the council during the majority of the Covid period, what I did notice, normally you associate grants with those who shout louder, significantly, much on red tape. And actually, I would say from a Covid perspective, that didn't happen. So my feedback certainly, and reflecting on Winchester City Council, I guess down to you guys, was that the grants were easy to apply for and they were paid promptly, which is kind of unusual, but it's a really nice thing to hear. And then just reflecting on Council Pearson, so as a member of a parish council, possibly at the time, I wrote the emergency plan for them. And I bet hardly any of them opened their emergency plans because Covid didn't fit into that normal cascade of phoning. You always imagine something, an emergency, emergency, something happening very promptly, aeroplane crash, train crash, that sort of thing. And I suspect that planning process didn't fit the Covid pandemic picture. I don't know, that would be interesting.
Not quite unique, though.
Thank you. Council Warwick. And Council Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. Just to spin the debate the other way around. I was well aware, when I was down to talking to people, that there were a lot of lonely people out there. So just looking at the, instead of the organisations down, let's make sure that we don't miss the residents, the customers, the people, the upwards. And as an example, I called at many doors, grownups and so on. And I got a lot of feedback that what elderly people, you know, cut off from the community and yesterday knew their neighbours, that they just wanted to talk, that they were lonely. And we need to bring that into our equation. A great example is that someone contacted me because they couldn't receive their milk anymore. And they couldn't receive it because they couldn't use the internet. The movement would only deliver milk if they could order off the internet and pay over the internet. So let's make sure we don't miss the lonely people and people who did not need to quite reach properly.
I think that's a quick one made. Can we talk about inequality? We may need to look carefully at what we mean by inequality, because it's unequal access to eat and our consumption and a cautious society is going to be another issue for a lot of people. Council Clay, did you want to add anything specific?
Oh, just very quickly, it was to the food pantries, because I know you in 12, doing jolly well. And then the food pantry arrived in Wickham Community Centre and it was an absolute joy. It's helped several families, several people, so we're jolly pleased, it's still going. But with the lonely people as well, we still have our phone lines going in Wickham, I must admit. And people are still ringing. I'm one of the contacts to say, if you're out and about, could you pick up this? Could you come and help me with that? So I think we will continue for as long as we need to. And I don't want you to think that this is just a piece of paper, we're not going to do any action when we go away. Thank you for speaking, but we're ignoring, we won't. And I must sing Steve's praises as well, because he's put this together and I've foremarked. And thank you for listening and your comments tonight. And Council Pearson, well done, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clay. So if we're happy, I would just like to thank Steve and the officers in your team that helped put this together. And thank Council Clay as the cabinet member for lobbying communities. And there is no doubt that this is going to be an important strategy going forward. And there have been lots of commentators, which I think, I hope, have helped people actually develop that strategy. We will look forward to seeing the draft coming back to the committee in March. And thank you, everybody, for both your questions and your comments on this item. So we're doing well. It's seven thirty. Right, we will move on to item three on the agenda, which is the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan for 2020. This is a hefty paper and it contains a great deal of information. So even before we start, I want to thank all the officers who've been involved in putting this together, because it's obvious there's a huge amount of work behind the paper. Again, the committee are being asked specifically to consider a comment on the temporary actions of identity point, mine as well as on the lots being proposed, and the other forum. Just bringing your attention to that at this stage, so that as we go through the questions and debates, we make sure we cover those things specifically. So either Council Murphy or, is it one of us like to introduce the paper? Council Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to bring this report to the public today. And I declare your thanks to the opposite for all your hard work on this. Since declaring the climate emergency back in June 2019, we have made it the heart of all we do as a council. And it's now more of an emergency than ever. Just in the last week, we've seen news headlines about a heat dog in Canada getting rise to temperatures of 47 degrees. Last Tuesday, more than 34 people died in Vancouver alone. We've also seen photos of seas on fire, with a rupture in an undersea gas pipeline in the Gulf of Mexico, sending flames to the surface of the sea, and an explosion in the Caspian Sea, sending enormous columns of flames shooting up into the skies. Although our influence in the world as a whole is tiny, you'll see from this report that as a council, we have made huge progress in the last two years. Alongside that, our strong leadership has encouraged communities and businesses throughout the district to follow our example and set their own targets. But we know we've got a lot left to do. We also know that we've got very limited resources, both in money terms and officer time. And that means in the year ahead, we need to make sure we make the most of those resources. When it comes to our city council targets, we have high levels of control and our priorities can be very specific. However, this is not the case for our district targets. Because those priorities are areas where we either do have some control or where we have significant influence. And we welcome the steer from the committee as to whether they agree with our priorities and for them to let us know what our top ten would be. As Council Ferguson said, we'd also like the committee to discuss what formats the new climate emergency open forum should take. As we want to be an enabling council, we see this forum as a place where people and groups share information. This leads us to think that the panel could change depending on the subject and being something more of a question time format. And I'd welcome members' thoughts on that. And I'm going to hand you over to Sue Robbins, who will take you through your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Thank you, Chair. And I'm too very pleased to present this first review of the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan and what has been achieved since the plan was first agreed in December 2019 and pretty much two years since the climate emergency declaration. The review covers inevitably the challenges from Covid-19 and some of the impacts and benefits that perhaps we've already touched on and we wish to retain. It covers the projects and actions that we've delivered. It also includes new carbon emissions saves for both the council and the district. The resources that we've deployed, chiefly our expenditure, but also the monies that we've been able to secure from some of the external funding sources. The campaigns and collaborations that we've undertaken and the delivery governance we've set up to help monitor and guide the programme. I'm not proposing to present a detailed overview of the review, you have the paper there, but I will write and draw out some relevant highlights. Firstly, the action plan sets out some delivering principles for councils against which there are a number of actions. An example of those has been included, including policy, engagements, incentives and investments. For example, our procurement strategy now has a requirement to have a minimum 10% weighting on sustainability when assessing tenders. Carbon literacy training now completed for over 60 staff. And we have commenced a 12-month project run by the Centre for Sustainable Energy and WINE Act to engage our local communities and so far 28 parishes have responded to the baseline survey on activity. We've talked about crowdfunding to go and green futures funds being established on that platform to enable businesses and communities to access funding to support their carbon neutrality or sustainability projects. And we have secured just over half a million pounds for the installation of PBs and energy efficiency measures in the city offices, our depot at Marwell. And some of those, we are approaching as a sort of test of pilot learning projects so that we can see which are the most effective to take forward over the length of the programme. The review does provide more detail on the work that has commenced and we have reported some of those at the past policy committees over the past year as well. But for example, we have installed EU charging points, new solar panels on the Winchester Sport and Leisure Park. Funding secured for bays to target and enable energy efficiency works for homes with the lowest energy ratings and experiencing fuel poverty. We've moved to green energy tariff. We've launched the biodiversity action plan and our local plan consultation placed climate emergency and sustainability at the heart of our development policies. In addition to the local plan, work has commenced to produce another report strategy, green economic development strategy, that will set the framework for the transition of the district's economy towards zero carbon. In relation to engagement and activity, we've held the first virtual sustainability conference, Roots to Carbon Neutrality, in October, and continue to support the Winchester Green Week in late September on the theme of doing more together. We've also set up new governance arrangements, including an external stakeholder group of key institutions, utility providers and representative agencies. At that meeting, we shared best practice, understand the initiatives that are coming forward and it really starts to create a network across the district of people interested in this agenda. However, all that activity does need to have an impact and we need to monitor that. And so over the last year, three new carbon emissions reports have been produced to the council, because we needed to catch up from the data that was provided in the first action plan, and one for the district. And the highlights are given in the report and the full reports are available on our website. Some of the key messages from the council data is that we do have the right direction of travel, the transport and energy, but focus must remain on these. There has been an increase in energy CO2 emissions with regard to domestic heating, but that is with regard to a new development just large coming into scope. Also with transmission, sorry, with transport emissions, reporting has increased in scope to also now include employee commuting. For the district, it is noted that all sectors of the district must substantially reduce carbon emissions and the most polluting areas are road vehicles, eating homes and commercial electricity consumption. And the rate of CO2 reduction needs to be significantly increased. This data and this work gives us the focus for our programme ahead and the need to concentrate on the largest sources of emissions, which remain transport, commercial energy and domestic energy for both the city and for the city council and for the district. Under these themes, we have proposed 13 priorities for the coming year and these have been drawn from the action plan that was approved in 2019 to ensure that our delivery bills on the programme are already provided. However, we do recognise the challenge and the need to build momentum. And so there are three areas of work where additional capacity will be directed. These are sustained transport, to develop proposals, coordinate engagement key agency and to be ready to bid for any government funding that might become available. Campaigns and communications to help promote more widely all that is being done and encourage behaviour change. I think we will recognise a huge amount of effort is happening across the district. We're perhaps not shouting loudly enough about that and engaging people in that endeavour. And finally, a roadmap of quantified and timed interventions that are needed to achieve, in particular, the district target. We recognise that there is a challenge ahead and we need to have a strong roadmap to quantify and give us the programme for next 10 years. As already mentioned by Council Murphy, one of the key additions we'd also like to build for our engagement is to set up the climate emergency open forum to open discussion, exchange ideas and create opportunity for two-way feedback. So in conclusion, the committee are asked to note the carbon neutrality programme review, to drive comment and feedback on the proposed priority actions. to drive comment and feedback on the proposed priority actions, ideally to break it down to 10 and comment on proposals and format the establishment of a climate emergency that they can afford. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Susan. So it's a great introduction to the paper and it certainly sums up in many ways what has been achieved particularly during a difficult year for some of the pandemic. So work's been done, we should applaud in full format. We're going to start with questions and then we're going to move to debate. I know members of the committee like to start with a round statement, but it may be better to ask the questions and then we can have the debate more fully onto those questions, I'm sure there are many. Councillor Williams, I just wanted to applaud Jan Stew because I didn't check whether he personally had any questions on the last paper. So if you have a question, please put your own hand up. You still want to speak out. Do we have our first question on this paper please? Oh councillor Rory, thank you for going first.
I said we could debate this one all night, I just wanted to congratulate you both on a really good paper and it's obviously something I'm very close to and I'm working in a similar vein. And there's a huge challenge, isn't there, between your own carbon emissions and those of the district? But I just, I just wondered that from my quick reading of this and from my perspective knowing the councillors I do, I think the big, three big challenges for you, even looking at your own carbon footprint, are the retrofit of your whole housing stock. I guess that's massive. Your two significant civic buildings, which I suspect, we know that are not that well incited. So that is your second major challenge. And the third for me is electrifying the fleet. So whether that's your refuse sprayers or it's your park and ride buses. Certainly I had the privilege of riding on the first electric bus on this trial in Winchester, which was arguably driven by councillor Martin Todd. I'm still here to relive the tale and it was fantastic. But those buses, that one was brought down from London especially. They retail at half a million pounds each and even bringing them into the Hampshire network. It's not, we're not going to buy 10 or, you know, it's not. So just quantifying that from, not only from a carbon accounting, but from a financial accounting and how you're going to sort of square that sample. That is a big question.
I don't know whether Susan, you want to challenge that or maybe Mr Wilson might be able to try and assist.
I was going to pass on it, Mr Wilson's way. But I think you're absolutely right councillor and we've identified those three elements within the priorities. I think some of it is going to have to be done in partnership with the county council, with the providers, particularly around electrifying the fleet. But I think as we start work on developing up the proposals, the feasibility, the cost etcetera, when the opportunity does present itself, we won't be ready. So I think if you can start that work now and seize the opportunity, be ready for it when it arrives. And I think with the civic buildings, we do note that we have some work that's in motion at the moment around Westling and the Guildhall and will further develop those proposals. And we are looking at measures for the city offices itself. And I'm now going to hand over for the housing retrofit. Thank you Susan.
Yeah, with regard to the housing retrofit, there is a very significant investment already included within our house, we're looking at, we've set aside £15 million and we're spending £5.5 million a year on that work. I think our early estimates are probably about £200 million to retrofit the whole stock. So whilst that's a significant investment, it's way short of achieving carbon neutrality throughout the stock. And the, I would echo what Susan said about the need to prepare ourselves for future funding rounds. And one of the experiences we found over this first year is we are really chasing after funding bits, the funding opportunities come up on extremely short deadlines. And I think one of them, Steve, you had the three or four days pair of bid that secured £200,000 and but it wasn't a well-formed bid because you only had three days to prepare. So one of the main aims over the next year is to commence work on work in particular buses is a great example where so much work is needed to prepare ourselves. So that when the opportunity arises, we have a proposal to submit. And the bid programmes do expect a well-formed proposal, well-worked out proposal. And one on buses in the last year, we simply weren't able to exploit in conjunction function. Although I understand the bus back fence strategy will certainly have helped with that one.
And it's not the case of, Mr Wilson, that it's not only the timing of the bid often it'll be timeframe to spend the money and complete the project, which is the challenge. And not always do, you know, our partnership organisations work at the same pace. You know, it's hard to get groups to work more together.
Certainly that's our learning from some of those early years of success in securing. They asked such tight deadlines to get that one off the ground. So even if we are successful with the bid programme, the event of procurement, commissioning and installations have been really challenging. I think to be fair to those organisations, they have allowed some flexibility with that. So for example, with the work to the city offices windows, which is being grant funded, we have been allowed an extension by six months. Six months, yes. So that would take us through and allow sufficient time to complete the works. But they are incredibly competitive.
Thank you. Yeah, I also welcome, I think we all agree we have kind of one planet and we've got to look after it. I guess my question, best direct to you is, obviously when we hear that word climate emergency, it's really scary, isn't it? It's always, sometimes there's these knee-jerk reactions to we must quickly do this, we must do that to fix the problem. As a new councillor, I guess this may be a question that you've had before, but do you have kind of the equation, councillor Ward pointed it to as well, the cost of sometimes putting these things in, obviously there's a big number. Well, actually, do you have an equation that you work to them from the sense of the financial costs, the environmental impact and the long-term effects? Just comparing it to other technology, when you look at the Blu-ray player, everyone went, this is going to be a great invention. And then all of a sudden, everyone went, no, let's go high definition. I guess there is a danger of spending billions of pounds on something. You know, we look at solar farms, you know, great idea and concept, let's put them over fields, but already test pilots and planes that run on hydrogen. So did you work with an equation that goes, actually, yes, it would be great to do this with our, with our commercial properties, but actually we could look at this an extra year down the line, which I think wouldn't have too much of a detrimental long-term effect on the planet?
I can't point to one equation that we have for that. But certainly that's the approach we've focused on. So as an example, with the housing retrofit programme, we are focusing our early efforts on what you may consider to be quite basic works, but it's the works that would have the biggest, the biggest impact. And so we are working on extra installation of property rather than addressing the technologies such as the heat pump or solar panels. They don't have the biggest impact in the property, it's the insulation, it's fact, it's a fabric-first approach that does that. And we will have the challenge of heating systems and what we do with heating systems in the future. And if we were to rush out now and do that, we wouldn't be able to. So it's important that we, we time the initiatives to exploit both grant funding and learning. So we are, we are working with other house providers, isn't it, at Sandford University, and looking at what will be the replacement of the gas boiler we intend to start on. And the charity is there as well.
Can I just ask a question while we're on the council's own property? I know that Cheshwood Lodge has increased our carbon by a significant amount. That's relatively new building. And a question I have is, is given it's a relatively new building, when it was built, why did it not incorporate the carbon reduction measures? Why is it not certain we were trying to get to as close to carbon neutral as we could at that time?
And it did surprise me when I saw the results, the impact that Cheshwood Lodge has had and then I thought that through. And what I suppose what we need to recognise is the, the impact of our housing schemes on the council's carbon footprint is on the, is on the emissions from communal areas in those schemes. So residents' individual flats, that counts as the district emissions, but the communal areas are bits we control. And so that's what contributes towards the abuse in data that we see. But Cheshwood Lodge was built to very high energy efficiency standards. It was pre-carbon neutrality declarations, but it was built to very high energy efficiency standards, so it was very large, so a barrel around the roof, a modern development system. Now, the year one, we suspect that was working very well. And so that, so when we saw those figures, we said, we need to, we need to get in there and just make sure the systems that are there are set. That's where it has to be handled. But it will always be, compared to our other housing schemes, Cheshwood Lodge will always be the biggest carbon emitter because it's an extract air housing scheme with excellent communal space. The whole concept of the scheme was to provide wonderful communal space for residents to exploit that. So most of our Cheshwood schemes don't have that sort of, don't have anything like that. So it will always be, you know, with the measures that are installed there, it will always risk quite high compared to other schemes. What we need to make sure is it's operating to its best efficiency. And one of the measures we want to undertake this year is a review of that development system and whether there are additional measures to bring those measures up.
Thank you. Okay councillor Lewis.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to address the larger side of the problem actually. So if we look at the carbon control of the council, it's a powerful sentiment in the district and the other side is 99%. It's clear that as an organisation, you should see the council don't have control over that. They didn't influence what is going on on that side of the equation. As you said, 10 years to drive that down and we need to make significant step changes in that time. So we take on board the common term, the action around working with the largest businesses in the area. Equally, we're going to have to work with the quite significant housing stock across the district. My question is, would it be helpful to have some form of partner and strategy in place? Because solutions in those areas, you will involve third parties delivering those solutions. So have you thought about putting in place a fairly robust partner and strategy to support the solutions in each of those areas?
Thank you. I'll take the business one if I may, because that's a long area that I work with in the economy side. So I think with the green economic development strategy that's coming forwards, there's going to be more of a framework to enable us to generate that sort of partnership work with our business community around their energy consumptions, but also taking that further about their practices, the technologies they can develop. So there's, there's an untapped potential there, I think, that we can use the economic strategy to assist us with. I think we do have a number of business organisations and partnerships and there's a sustainable business network and there is, we link in lots of different organisations. So I think it would be interesting to understand what role they can play rather than necessarily creating another sort of partnership that requires the same governance. But I think it's something that we should review and we're happy to look into what arrangements would be appropriate for that. I think on the housing stock, which you are able to comment on that as well.
Well, I think that's probably councillor Lewis's question, unless the council don't have a stock, the wider housing stock generally.
Yes, I'm talking about the wider, the district wider. And I'm not talking about partnering with businesses within the district, but I'm talking about partnering with organisations that can provide solutions, maybe energy companies, maybe it may be anywhere to be, can provide the sorts of solutions, green solutions that we need to be able to drive the carbon footprint down across the entire district. Those are the sorts of partners. And maybe there is a role in the organisation, a specific partner manager within our organisation to manage that entire relationship and with targets.
I mean, I think you said, that the initial carbon strategy didn't recognise the importance that we can't do this, we have to do this with our partners. And Susan did refer to the stakeholder group that's been established and representatives of major organisations in the district as well as influences and WINE Act as well. So we're working with the people, we're trying to develop this partnership as we move forward, determining the most effective ones, at least by the challenges for the years. But I think the point's well made, you know, we won't achieve anything district-wide just in the house speed, with all the plans across the district and nationally. One that we have established assigned to is the Net Zero Collective at Sandford University, it's a university called like that. But that's a sort of learning platform, but also where we can share expertise with other people and academics as well. So at the moment, you know, that's still at that research stage, it's the best solution.
Thank you. And obviously we've also had the Winchester Movement Strategy, which is a very close partnership with the French County Council. I don't know what's wrong with that.
The Movement Strategy is, like I say, a joint, a joint strategy with the county council and the city council. There'll be, we are proposing to bring, to ask Andrew Ingham, who was our representative on that programme, to attend the next meeting of this committee to, to update how the role of our transport policies and how they contribute to this agenda. But the Movement Strategy is a key element of that. And how we can reduce the impact of the issues in the city, I think, is a major element of that strategy. And so we'll see more information, the rest of the subjects in the coming stages.
Do you like to ask some? Just to help you there, because we're doing that same conversation with the county. So it's like a pyramid, you know, so your district, you're doing a bit, county's overarching that and we're working with partners, with environmental agencies, some of the water, the energy providers, it's the only way and then in turn with government. So we're all doing it together, join up.
Thank you councillor Rory. And you can place this next with a question.
Well, truth be sure, I've a question normally through the paper, but actually first question is how are we going to deal with this? Are we going to do it section by section or going to keep on with generic questions?
How many questions do you have councillor Lewis?
Well, okay, I'll do a starter. First one, I'm looking at page 13, the table on there as a starting point because elements of that are repeated all the way through the rest of the document. First one regarding transport, have the council, at any level, because I'm questioning the city council rather than county, taken on the revolution on transport? I.e. a switch from diesel to petrol cars because only 10% of vehicles actually are electric now according to Figg's published yesterday. Second point, has the council taken on board the increase in the number of delivery vehicles and what the impact of that is on carbon neutrality? The, and indeed the impact on carbon emissions. The energy saving, yes, congratulations on that. I'm afraid you missed the point, Miss Robbins. You missed out the gain we had when we closed River Park Leisure Centre. That was an incredible gain and yet it's not mentioned right away through this paper. Because it is something which is quality. Yes, the new leisure centre is energy generous, but it's not a fraction of what we're gaining by closing your building there. And surely that should have been in this paper somewhere. I agree with what Bridger said about the Cheshwood Lodge, so I'll ask a question about that. Are you taking on board the changes that developers have been encouraged to introduce regarding the quality of buildings that they're building for us? Because we have something in reach of 49, 50,000 houses in this district. And only about 5,000 of those are And only about 5,000 of those are county council, sorry, council houses. So linked with that is, we talk about the retrofitting of Allo housing stock, which is movement to the housing, a council housing, although you don't mention that in 2012. What other housing associations do they? Because they're also affordable and those people, because they're on low income, will also need help. Are we working partly with them? I've not seen any sign of them actually doing anything. As I said, I mean, what we're going to deal with, I've got a whole round of questions. Well, the other thing I'll say before I go on, one comment is, there's a mixture in this paper between what we have done, but you're saying we're still going to do it, we actually have already done it. And I'm just, I'm not giving this last credit because it's been done. There's a lot of visionary stuff in there, which are always dodgy. And less form of forum is not a good answer to me. But now getting into debate.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Councillor, we'll do, I think, four then, and we'll deal with those and then we'll...
Well, the transport changes is a good starting point, because that impacts on carbon saving and climate change.
Susan has written down, I saw her writing furiously, so Susan, do you want to start?
And retrofitting of local housing, that's the key one.
I will do my best to answer some of those, but I have got other colleagues who are also more versed in some of the details and I may hold on there. And with regard to the transport, I think we have recognised that this is an area that we need to do more work and we need to understand more deeply, and which is why we suggested in here that that is an area of increased capacity for us and that we will look to have a sustainable transport officer. So that detailed work can be thoroughly looked into. So I think at this stage, I would say that we probably don't know the detail well enough as to the sorts of measures that you're talking about and the changes and the impacts. And that also leads on to the roadmap that I was talking about, that we need to have a better quantified set of interventions and that programme going forward, that build in all of those different externalities. There's a change in new technologies, new policy, et cetera. So I think we recognise that that's the work that we need to do. And with regard to the leisure park centre, I thought I'd mentioned it in the fact that we need to recognise the change. Okay, but it's in my apologies, but there is some data delay in the fact that this is the data for the previous year, it's not for the last year. So this year it goes up to March 2020. So I think there is always a bit of a lag between some of the data and what we're reporting on from a data perspective opposed to what we deliver as projects, but we haven't yet quantified or it hasn't worked through into the data yet. So it is a difficulty in us trying to express some of that data lag and the impacts that's having with the project work that we're doing. So that's with the leisure park. We do recognise that there is going to be a change there and we need to look at that. And developer standards, this was talking about the new...
This is actually the new standards, like Brea and the Brea Plus, which developers are now introducing along with passive housing. We're not giving them credit for doing that, I know there'd be a question. And I know they've been delayed by building regulations, which is a pain in the backside. But I want to say again, credit to us, the council houses we're building now are at the highest standard that they've ever had to be produced by the developers.
I think, I would agree that the industry can drive forward change more quickly than policy can at times and that they respond to market demand and climate demand. You know, from a business point of view, occupiers expect high efficiency buildings and so to higher levels. And I think our local plan work will also bolster our development management processes around the level of sustainability and carbon reduction that we require in future developments across the district. I can't say anything more on that at this time. But I think they find their comments, that there are, this is a report that we would happily discuss with you outside this forum to take on some of those detailed comments, if that would be helpful.
Thank you.
There's one other crucial question I could ask, Bob. As we're through by person.
So perhaps come back to that if we may. I feel that councillor Christ, you were keen and hopeful to ask a question.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Geoff. So first off, I think we probably all in this room recognise that the climate emergency is probably one of the biggest challenges that we all face, you know, and the whole community faces. So actually, I'm really pleased to see that we are putting, you know, time and effort and energy into trying to develop this strategy. And I think, as I see things here and on the news this day, we are still in the early stages of trying to wrap our arms around the subject, it's a huge subject. Two years, two years is still quite early, so...
So councillor Westwood, can I ask you to turn up your microphone and give you some feedback? Councillor Westwood, can you turn up your microphone?
Of course.
Thank you.
So, you know, I really want to commend you on putting this paper forward. You know, it's always hard to put a paper forward when you know that people are going to criticise you, particularly on such a huge subject where you can't possibly know everything about everything. So congratulations on that. Like councillor Westwood, I am more concerned, I'm reasonably confident in our ability to influence council sources of emissions. Yeah, it's still going to be challenging, but we kind of can wrap our arms around that. I'm much less so on achieving district aims. So in that regard, I note that the priorities are organised around transport and sources of emissions. And that's, you know, certainly a good first level of segmentation. I think there's another level of segmentation that might be useful, and I don't know if you've done this in the work, is looking at our ability to influence and who has the most ability to influence? Because some of the sources of emission, we're going to see progress made because of other factors. It might be government, central government policy, you know, the deadlines on selling actual diesel vehicles. That will help. There might be assumptions that could be made around the, just the key, people making decisions, choices to go to being green in some of these categories. There'll be, you know, and within each of these sorts of categories, there will be. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Christ, for doing your job for me.
So the question, thank you for reminding me. And the question was, what analysis has been done to segment those sources of emissions into those things that we can most influence, those that we can least influence and those that are in between? Have we done that sort of work? And the second question, which is sort of related, is what specific KPR is I proposing to introduce in order to manage and report on progress towards our targets? Thank you for the preceding point.
I want to get to that.
I'll need to remind you for...
Thank you councillors. I think, Susan, you just touched on some of this, the roadmap and being taken into account, some of those externalities that I think councillor Christ is pointing to. But if you wanted to either try and address these questions or equally, you do have a colleague on line, and if he needs support.
I'm also seeing so that we may want to respond as well.
Councillor, did you want to go first or would you like Susan to?
If I start with easy bit. We're well aware that the district emissions, you know, there are some we're responsible for. And per our annual report, we like us that for us. So we've asked for the next report that they do, that they try and change the way they do the report so that will sort of quantify some of those aspects for us. So we will have that for future use.
May I add to that on the spheres of influence? And we do have diagrams, we do have information around those different areas. And we have been looking at that, particularly around behaviour change, how they influence. And so that's another area of what we really want to develop. But I don't think, and I'll check with the team, that we've actually done a matrix of, as you suggest, we've got the spheres of influence and the people and the activities, but I don't think we're going loads about then with the carbon emissions. And I think that could be useful exercise for us to have a look at. I don't know if my colleagues do, thanks for that, thank you.
Thank you for your joining us.
Thanks, yeah, really just to mention the win at the report, which will really help. They're going to try and be much clearer in their future reports about, not just us, but who else could influence? The key things that they identify as the important steps to take. So that will also help us put some pressure on those others who might be affected as well. Susan mentioned about the behaviour change work, they had a really, really good bit of work there actually, councillor a year or two ago, to me, the inside report around climate behaviour change that I think will really help us, certainly in terms of our behaviour change campaign, we want to do around levels of upside that are amongst people for different types of interventions, be it very low level stuff or, you know, up to moving from, for example, petrol to electric vehicle, which will really help us target and focus on that messaging to try and get the right people with the right kind of messaging and then certainly the right type of work. I think that's something we really need to include as part of that, is that deeper analysis of where everything actually starts and ends.
I just think councillor Christ and Stoke, about the KPIs we have to actually monitor our progress.
Thank you. Well, certainly the main KPIs are the carbon emissions and tracking that information and the trends over time for those different areas. We are also looking at more detailed work with the parish councils and mapping carbon emissions at much more local levels. We have a deep understanding there. And each project has its own KPIs and its own outcomes with that. So I think that's where our internal governance comes in. We report to our property committee and so we have internal reporting that we do around the overall programme. And so, as I say, individual projects have KPIs that then feed up into that report. I don't know if you want to add anything.
The only thing I was going to add is, as I certainly mentioned, this is a piece of work that's happening at the moment with the Centre for Sustainable Energy around local communities, which will help identify their own parish carbon footprint and community carbon footprint. I'm not quite sure what that might lead to in terms of KPIs, but I think for me, that's really interesting, exciting piece of work around trying to get them to take some sense of ownership and responsibility for some of these.
Is that right, Bob?
Yes, that's all, yeah. Around some sense of ownership around the carbon footprint relates to their part of the district. And I think it's quite possible that some KPIs might develop out of that, which we can use to help us measure and gauge the extent to which we're engaging and then the extent to which that is actually making a difference. I'm not quite sure what that will look like yet, but I'm hoping that might emerge out of that year on piece of work.
Thank you, Steve, and Susan.
Yes, so we've got a question from councillor Lutowski, and I'm going to ask a question as well.
Councillor Lutowski, I'm going to answer this one, it's transferred, she might be, how to answer it?
My question's really looking at this idea of the climate emergency open forum and how we sort of would feel that this might work? Would we be looking at key specific areas such as the plants or the housing, you know, those kind of main things? And how would we sort of see, you know, the makeup of this? I mean, also something that kind of occurred to me while I was thinking of my question, which I think actually councillor Warren might know the answer to, more to do with Hampshire. And I'm fairly certain that Hampshire has started to do things of climate emergency with parish councils, actually getting them to kind of come up with climate plans. And is that something, if that's being done at the parish council level, that really we should be making as a city that we're doing that building upon building, that we're all kind of working together? So really, those are sort of my questions.
Thank you for the question on the open forum. I think we are looking at different agendas. Don't want to be too prescriptive because we also want this to be a two-way feedback. So actually, from residents or the participants, you know, we're going to understand what they want to talk about, what they want to debate or what they want to challenge us on. So clearly, we will want to concentrate on those key themes of transport and energy and behaviour change. But the climate emergency forum also provides an opportunity to widen our conversation a little bit. This is very much a carbon neutrality action plan with the supporting biodiversity and nature elements of that. But this could actually provide opportunity for a wider conversation about some of those other areas of concern, areas of interest. So it's not actually defined, sort of set agenda. It might be that there's something topical that comes up that needs to be addressed at that time. So that today can take place, but another time it might be a more set programme because we have a reporting requirement. So I think it's going to be a mix and blend.
I'm actually really pleased to see the climate emergency forum, whatever you're going to call it, coming forward. I noticed from the engagement around the local plan that is actually the piece around the carbon neutrality of climate emergency within the local plan that got the most engagement. So we know that there is an appetite in the community to want to be involved in this journey with us and to also help steer us in the things that they want to see done. Because if they feel it's coming from them, then they're more likely to sort of take action. So I'm really pleased to actually see this open forum I did coming forward. The issue I have around it is simply how you manage it. You know, there have been forums which have been less successful than others and getting the terms of reference right will be really, really important. I think councillor, we need, you're actually asking a question to councillor Warren.
Yes, I wanted to confirm that I was right about parish councils. Because it was something in my mind that I remembered from being at various parish council meetings and I wanted to check that that's where I was, whether it was that. And I suppose we sort of asked back, are we doing that work with parish councils as well? Because they are such a big part, as we discovered on the previous, you know, piece with the community and wellbeing. They're such a, they've got the connections and the networks across our district. Are we working with them on this? Because it seems that Hampshire is, and we really need to be doing that, join us up.
Yes, so we are, and my question is, the greening campaign is probably what we refer to, which started in Peterborough, but actually several parishes have already joined up within Winchester district and fire Winchester city council. So I think you're controlling that sort of signup fee and promoting that, which is fantastic. So we are, and your offices meet with Hampshire offices as well, so that's...
And just with my town forum hat on, as opposed to my chair hat on, you often talk about engagement with parishes, but we must also ensure we don't miss the five on parish boards in town. So just to take on board, Steve?
Just back to that, excuse me. So I think the piece of work that we're doing this year, a piece of work around, and I keep referring to it as parish engineering, it started off as that, but actually the company, the work members developed the model. So they're actually reporting on all city council board levels as well. So I could be, you could see some of that information if you have, make sure you get that. Just going back to the county thing, absolutely, we've been supporting some parish greening campaign. But this wider work that we're doing is probably going to be a more comprehensive way of us engaging with parishes. But we actually, we probably need to talk a little bit better and make sure we're not duplicating and sort of missing something about in between as well.
So I think councillor Lutowski, thank you for waiting.
No, my pleasure, Geoff. I'm going to avoid doing a speech, so councillor Pearson is leading us Newbies Australia on that. But it's just to say, I suppose, that it's the foundation of assuring that in this room, regardless of political party, there seems to be a very unified approach to making this as effective a strategy and plan as possible. Because it's something clearly we're passionate about and that passion coming across from the officers too. So that is brilliant. My question, actually, a very quick point of information, I think, just to sort of both support councillor Pearson and Miss Robbins is about the presence of commentary on RPLC in the report. I know at page 41, there's an ELSO chart which advises the council commercial energy. A red colour centre in blue appears to be almost half of the emissions that might come from the country of our top 10 sites. And then there's a box in the whole page that says, you're a part leisure centre, because I'm supposing it's a place with a new leisure centre. That would inevitably be assessed in crypto, so I would assess that impact. So it's implied that, you know, there's a significant impact. The question is a bit more specific, a bit dull potentially, it's quite important. The community strategy is referred to you as... Um, the procurement strategy is referred to you as paragraph two point two B and says we have a minimum ten percent weighting for environmental and social value. We've been asked to have header valuations now. So two points to the question. One is how much of that weighting is to environmental considerations and how much of social value? Social value more or less is, is, is different, I suppose, on climate versus group here. So I'm kind of keen to know how much is very focused on environmental factors. Uh, and B, is that enough? Um, and should it be more? And how can we benchmark against other councils in relation to our procurement? Um, if you really want to be serious about climate emergency, should we be, should we be going to, uh, as great an extent as possible from demanding from our suppliers that they, uh, they link the highest possible standards in terms of environmental considerations? That's my question.
Thank you. Um, with regard to the split of that 10% between the environmental and the social, we don't prescribe that. That will be dependent on the type of contract being procured or the, oh, sorry, the type of service or product, et cetera, that's being procured. And so we don't stipulate it. However, the procurement team are creating a guide for officers to advise them on the sorts of sustainability criteria or considerations that should be included within that evaluation. Um, I, I would have to refer to my procurement colleagues as to whether or not they benchmark that 10% with any other, um, local authorities that are in the area or who are leaders in, in this area. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that, but I can come back to you on that. Um, so I think that was the, I was wondering if it should be more, yeah.
Thank you.
Chair, just to add, I think one of the other important criteria for, for procurement processes is to consider, um, probably rather than evaluating a percentage in relation to social or environmental benefit of the contract, is, is to make sure that it's written in detail as spec. Um, so if we can actually require it as part of work, that's going to be more, would be far stronger than, as I think I can say in terms of, and a micro, potentially sort of that, it becomes more part of our factor than it's, it's congruent, congruent with the situation.
And I'm conscious of the time, so I do want to move into debate. And councillor Pearson, I'm conscious that you had this question, um, which was around climate diversity. Um, and councillor Warwick, your hand has gone up. Is that the question or did you want to move into debate?
Quick question.
Okay.
Let me explain my question, shall I?
I know that councillor Warwick first, just as a person, quick.
Well, it is, it is possible, what is in here?
Okay. Um, just go to councillor Warwick, we'll come straight back to you. I haven't forgotten that you want to ask it.
Quick question, it might not have a quick answer. I just wondered if you could comment on Winnet's view that it would be not possible in the present sector, the circumstances to achieve the council's target of carbon neutrality by twenty thirteen and what your view is on that, that comment. Please, that's on page forty-four.
Thank you. I think we recognise that it is a very challenging and ambitious target. Um, and I think we've, we've discussed the, the, the key measures that are going to be needed and the shift and the change that is going to be required to meet that target. Um, I think it's about, um, as I said, going back to the roadmap and really understanding how we can move towards that. Um, we have got key policies in development for the local plan with the green economy development strategy. So I think, um, they are, um, giving us the, the evidence base to show us the areas we need to focus on. And so we work very closely with them and identifying where we need to concentrate and to create that shift. Um, but yeah, I think it is, it's a challenge and I think we try to reflect and acknowledge that within the report and the priorities that we've set out for the coming year.
Thank you councillor Warwick. Um, I know that in the work plan, there was a report made to come to this policy committee around, um, carbon offsetting. And, um, I'm sure that there is going to be a need, um, for us to do some carbon offsetting to get to zero carbon. Um, but I don't really want to go into that now. We can go into that in detail when that report comes to us. Councillor Pearson, you have the floor with your question.
Yes, well, I'm looking at page six and really the question is about what is written on, so there's nothing wrong with what's on page six, it's just where we're going with the, uh, in the lines of what councillor Warwick has said about the Winnet comments, which, um, didn't surprise me, but did worry me. The, one of the things I've come across in planning is that we're talking about a link which involves diversity and planning and climate emergency. And it doesn't seem as though we're doing any training of those teams, you know, to get a real link as to how we can learn from the biodiversity team as an input to the planning, um, consultation situation. Now, let me give you an example from a recent planning application. Uh, we were looking at removal of a house in a big garden and then, um, giving permission which we did for at least three or four speculative bungalows, uh, treacherous sanctuary flats, they look like, but two bungalows. And the biodiversity answer within the planning situation was rat boxes, hedgehog, whatever it is for hedgehogs, and maybe the reptiles. That was it. I'm sorry, that is not it, it's part of biodiversity and the impact on planning, planning impact on biodiversity, which is required from DEFRA for a, a minimum 10% gain of biodiversity on a development site. Now, the developer, I know the afterwards, interesting conversation, he's coming, oh, don't worry about the plant from the site, they're not taking someone else's new plant there. And I've got to say, that was a unique bit of carbon offsetting, but it did not re-answer the requirement of biodiversity on that site. Regardless of where offsetting, as far as biodiversity is concerned, um, we try and improve the requirement. So that is really what I'm saying is that this new sector of farmers is an important part of this requirement, carbon emergency, uh, and how the two are linked. It is, I think, the requirement of training for attractations, um, which, um, to get those two teams linked together. Now, what they do is fine, and after it's ours, they're two teams. It's just that they, they don't see the link yet. Mind you, a lot of people don't see the link. Um, I'm a joke musician by background, who filed it, so we say more, not passing obviously. So what are we doing about that side of it? Because if you remove the vegetation, the impact on biodiversity, you're also impacted on carbon production. Another one, well, there's a black hole, obviously there is a black hole.
Thank you councillor.
No one else has thought about it? Agreeing? What other examples?
Thank you, thank you for the question. Um, I know it's on page fifty-three, um, there's pieces of the council's governance. Um, and it talks about the carbon neutrality and communication group in that. And I just wanted, you know, I know that that group is there to group officers across different departments to tell them what to address this whole issue of carbon neutrality and the council's targets. I wondered if that, that was something where this issue could be raised.
Chair, it certainly can. Both of those teams are represented on that group next group. Um, I think it would be a bit unfair to say that they don't get the link. I think they do get the link, you've got some really passionate people in both of those teams. Uh, biodiversity and the local plan is a, is a, is a current topic and, and there's dialogue between both of those teams together. Have you got it right yet? Of course, of course not, you know. Exactly, yeah, I get that. Um, in the work programme, we have got group one, the, the, the chairman referred to them scheduled for the December meeting, which explores exactly, so it's an update on, on the biodiversity action and the link to the local plan. So that's, I think, they'll be far better basically than answer to, to your question, I think, at that meeting than we're able to as, as the people swing. When I'm saying chairman, basically, I don't see this as a high level document, it's a lot of detail. Really, some of this detail should be coming through in this document. Now, this is not a question we want to respond to, it's fine, it's fine, it's government. What I'm talking about is what's not there.
Um, thank you councillor Pearson for those comments. Right, it is now hot state. I know there is at least one member of the security who would like to get to their television at some point this evening and when these, as I said, football match going on to somewhere. Um, so can I please ask before we move into debate? Um, thank you for your questions. It's certainly such nice hope that anything useful for officers. Who, if anybody would like to start the debate on this, or I'd be just doing a report. Uh, can, I think councillor can pitch you, councillor Westwood, what you want to do next?
Thank you. Yeah, it was just an observation on the district levels, which obviously was clearly a concern. We kind of mentioned about partnerships and engagement with the city. There's controllables that we can control, we can deal with those. Um, I guess it's, it's a food for thought of, of the confidence of, of the community element, that, you know, we often see change takes generations and generations need to get on board with that. You know, are we confident that all of a sudden we have a generation, which we seem to have, the younger generation, well, it's true, let's on board with, with the impact we're having on the environment and that's obviously working its way up as well, the conversation with residents and businesses. And actually that effect in the district on the wider part of the, the carbon plan is actually, it will not look after itself, but the communities will play a massive part in that. Actually, that number might come down a bit quicker than we expect because the things we can't control actually is, as a, as a group of residents, as a community, we're actually affecting the impact on that.
Um, thank you councillor for that comment. Um, councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair, very quickly, because councillor can pick me to that question. Well, my, my point was that we need to energise the conversation across the district and get people engaged in this process to make it successful.
Thank you councillor Westwood. Would anyone else like to join the party?
Oh, can I actually put it for you? I think it's on a similar sort of vein and I think it is that thing, and I'm hoping with something like, we are having a open forum and it actually is a chance to engage. And, you know, I know that, um, councillor Murphy and I unsuccessfully, due to Covid, had tried to have a youth sort of parliament. And I do think that one of the things we really have to be seeking to do is to get young people involved and move forward on things like that, because they are the ones who are inherited of it. And I think that they're maybe some of the, you know, they really look passionately about, and I think some of that change will start to come because I know councillor Pearson talked about the fact that people don't see the link, they don't see the link. And I discussed this with my husband, we've got with things, you know, iron cards, people don't see the link that that's causing my asthma to be worse and it's damaging, you know, all of our lungs and the blues. People don't see it. And I think young people do see it, I think they get it much better than we do. And I think there is that thing that hopefully we are going to move forward, having other people involved and a wider audience that they can kind of engage, encourage and do. And I think the only way we can do it is by doing it together. You know, we are stronger together than we are on our own. And I think that, that meeting is vital.
Thank you councillor Williams. And one of the things I saw in the one hundredth report, um, was the investment in communications officer around, um, our whole climate emergency programme and making sure that we are doing the level of engagement that's needed. And see, would you like to come along on that?
Oh, you say we should start today? So, so this is the first day of the future.
Um, so we should expect one of the days coming, coming already. And councillor to the keeper.
Well, just to pick up on that, I suppose it would be very helpful at some point, not to put her under pressure, but to have some form of campaigns planned, uh, and, and identify what those campaigns are and how, how they're going to further the goal of this plan. Because I agree councillor and councillor Westwood, that is, it absolutely depends if we take people with us. Um, and I think the, uh, just thinking, you know, for example, a, a simple campaign around encouraging recycling would be really, really effective in trying to, um, raise awareness, inform people about what sorts of things can be recycled, what services are available for recycling, you know, on the doorstep, um, during, you know, the campaign that's made that I, I, and a lot of people raised questions around what can and can't recycle, where do I put these things for recycling? I think there's a, um, there's a, there's a bit of a gap there in information we're providing people. So campaigns like that, I think, can be really vital. So really good appointment, very sensible point of paper.
Right, councillor to the keeper, thank you for bringing up a point of recycling. And I know there's a comment in here, a very common about the circular economy, which isn't quite recycling, but having to spend a week's holiday in Wales, um, where I needed, I felt almost agree to work out how to deal with my rubbish, because there were five bins and I needed to know exactly what could go in what bin. There's a difference between brown paper and white paper and felt paper, cuttle paper. Um, so, but we are obviously, there's more we could do. And I think the borough bill is going to push the county, which will be going to push us, um, to do more around recycling. And councillor Williams, is there?
Yeah, I mean, I'd very cross to criticise that maybe, yes, I, I do see helps, but unlike what has been done as far as our own property is concerned, but it's something that the, the gains we have made are part of results of what we've done in the Guildhall and, um, what we've done by closing River Park. From then onwards, it starts getting very, very difficult. Retrofitting our council homes is expensive and it's going to be more so as time goes on. Can't escape that fact. Uh, that's quite clear in the budget and it's quite clear, um, for any of us who retrofit our own homes, um, with insulation, with double glazing, with solar panels, we know, we all know how expensive that is, more so when the council takes on board, because the money's got to come from somewhere. Um, and this is where the role of grants come in. I'm a little bit more worried when it comes to, uh, the district thing, their, um, thing, I shouldn't have said the wrong word, is very much at the aspiration stage. Um, because we're not just talking about council property, which is relatively easy for us to talk about, because it's our property. It is much, much more difficult when you're going on, trying to re-educate people who live in their homes, um, and re-educate them regarding their lifestyle styles and so on. And I've got to say, um, these, uh, these comments from Centre for Sustainable Energy, my parish council greeted a lot of derision and glee, very, very glee, because it was so wildly out of tune what they understood was going on. Um, criticism about using, using, use of cars, for example, or the bus service. You don't have much choice to use a car for the bus service. Um, that's just a simple example, why this, these documents are helpful, on the other hand, it won't be helpful at all. And I think we're all very much in this learning stage, I think you're, you're agreeing with that. Um, it's joining up the different parts of what we're trying to do. I point about monitoring planning and biodiversity. And many of you go from there for planning, biodiversity to carbon gains and carbon captures and that link there. You then raise out things like nitrate and dealing with that, we don't mention that here, and yet that's an important part of what we're trying to do. Um, because if you, and yet of course still within this document, anaerobic digesters. Anaerobic digesters produce methane, which is a global warming gas. You've got to think about what you're going to do with that gas if you're going to produce this. Um, the other situation, back to the question here, how many hectares of solar farms have we already got within the district? Very minor district farming area. I mean, I can think of a couple of ours, but, uh, I've got two between Mrs Worfham and Swallow. There's another one down in the southern parishes and these are big, the southern parish one is huge. And the opposition, we then come to, you talk about them here, wind farms. Every wind farm that's coming for the planning committee in this council has been turned down. For real reasons, it's a wonder that we've still got this in this document. It shouldn't be there because we're turning it down by that. Or we've got to say, hang on you guys, if you're really serious about alternative energy, you've got to think about that. I dare say, mention fusion power stations, one actually put, uh, one is being produced in Oxford. Um, Bezos is financing one there, it's a prototype. Nonetheless, uh, that's fusion, not vision. The difference are radioactive. I could go on, that's what I said to you, I would like to go with this document page by page. That would take time.
Yeah, I think councillor, um, you know, Susan Williams is obviously to sit down with you. down with you in a meeting.
Well, I'd like to do that, I'm happy to do that, as, as Linda knows, I already supported it in, in a conference we had, the web and air conference.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Wilson, thanks.
So I'm glad to do this.
So I suggest that, um, if officers, if they're, if they're, please, if they go through, could I just turn up your mic? Because it's giving feedback. Could you please turn up your mic?
Yeah.
Because that's the feedback, thank you. Um, I, I think that the issue around the energy generation, and that is in fact one of the things that we're on, speaking to come back to this committee, and I think it's a theme that we're going to be looking at in December, if I might, if I remember you certainly well. Um, there is an issue, and, and it's something I think, Councilor Murphy, that's been raised within the local plan, work that's going on, whether or not we should be potentially calling for science or energy generation science, if we're serious about generating energy in the district. And I think the points, the points that were made around, um, what do we currently have? How many hectares do we have currently, how much energy do they currently produce? Um, you know, that, that would be worthwhile, but I don't know, Councilor Murphy, if you wanted to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, we're going to be speaking to the planning team soon, um, to discuss what could go into the local plan, a bit of culture and renewable energy sites, but also possibly having a presumption in favour, um, because at the moment, um, people want to do wind farms or solar farms, they think they might have a big fight in their hands, so if there's a presumption in favour, it might encourage more people to come forward to this. That's something to think about and discuss. So, um, yeah, we, but we are going to be having the sort of sleepless meeting, and telling the local plan team, we'll be getting together and working on that to see what we can do. And we'll also be talking about biodiversity as well, because we know that is a key, key thing for me, it's one of my passions. So, um, I know that Council, that Sue Crocker is passionate, she has been talking to the sort of local plan team, and she has been talking to actually all the departments in the council to try and sort of get to where some of that passion, and I think it's working. And I think, you know, by the book, reading on verge, you can tell that lots of presence in the district, you're also passionate about biodiversity, it's becoming, it's become one of the hot topics.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Murphy. Um, it is now quarter to nine, is, is there any more debate? I have a few comments to, to sum up, but are we, are we, are we done with debate? Okay, um, Councilor Murphy, did you want to add anything more before I get my comments?
I just quite like to touch on the session about 2030 targets and WINEC. Um, they've been very supportive to us in our 2030 targets, um, because they, they've realised that it is ambitious, but, you know, it, it gives a sense of urgency, and if you set an ambitious target, you start working immediately, which is what we've done, whereas if you sort of set a target 2050, you can afford to something, right, while I wait a few years. So WINEC have been very supportive. But as we've covered this evening, um, there is a data lag in the data we've got, and there's things we've done that haven't had an effect yet in the data we're getting. So this is very much to start thinking about the work we do in the coming year. Um, because, I mean, maybe we haven't been sort of blowing our trumpet well enough about what we've been doing in the last couple of years, and I take that one forward, because we, we have done a lot, and some of it will come through in, in next year's data, well, we're expecting 21 data in the next few months. Um, so a lot of that will come through in that. So this is really to sort of, to sort of say, what's next? Um, and, you know, if you can give us a steal on that, whether you think we're going down the right path, that would be great. And I also think Councilor Williams mentioned the, um, the open forum and the governance that, and, and that is also where I think we would like it to be different from the usual open forums, and if you can come up with any good ideas, governance for that, it'd be excellent. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Murphy. Um, I just wanted to thank officers for obviously the amount of work that has gone into producing this paper, um, and also for the ongoing work that you're doing to bring forward, um, you know, our attempt to reach those carbon retransit targets for 2024, 2030. Um, I think everybody here in this discussion we've had, the questions that have been raised, recognised that those targets are ambitious, um, but it also shows determination on the part of the council that we are going to reach for those targets and to do all we can to influence others to make sure that they reach for those carbon retransit targets too. And I was pleased to see in the paper specifically, but I know that with WINEC, as I commented before in a previous report, that they couldn't sort of discern that's a distinct difference between the council's targets for the, for the council and the district. And so I, I appreciate the clarity that's been brought to the fore by separating those two things out. Um, I also think that in terms of priority today, we focus in our discussions on the issue of end transport, we focus on commercial energy, we focus on domestic energy. So I think that should give you a good sense that given most of the areas that we have targeted, that the priorities that you're setting out, you know, are in the right areas. Um, I do also, um, welcome the fact that we are going to be doing work on looking at a specific, I'm trying to think what it was called there, the, the roadmap, um, that looked at the externalities. Um, it would be interesting to, when that roadmap has, has been done, for us to actually sort of see that at some point, um, and to understand how it is going to help us get to those end days, or at least let us know exactly what the gap is, and what more we need to do. It is clear from looking at the district carbon emissions that we won't get anywhere close, unless we were in close partnership, and again, maintenance committee have, have raised that. Um, I do congratulate officers on the, um, the success in gaining access to funding bids, and also recognising in this, that again, if we are going to move forward, we have to keep being successful in accessing government funding. There's been a lot of talk tonight also about joined up thinking around the whole climate emergency, major emergency. And, and it is true that, you know, we, we as a district council, we have to join up thinking, but we also need the county council to have joined up thinking, and indeed the government. We have a buzz-back better strategy, but at the same time, within the county's budgets under such stress, that currently consulting on removing a consensual subsidy from their robust services and robust services. So there isn't always joined up thinking at a sort of a higher level for the district council. I think we've all commented on the open forum, I think it's a good idea, um, we want to make sure that there is that flow of ideas up and down, so it isn't people just come to listen, that they actually have the opportunity to import and to priorities. Um, but again, all I can say is, you know, there's a huge amount of work to be done, there's a huge amount of work to be done, and we look forward to hearing more what, what's happening. So, um, as it is now, I think it's quarter to nine, um, again, I just want to thank everybody here this evening for, for your comments, for your debate, I think the officers who answered questions very fully, to thank Councilor Murphy, and to also thank Councilor Claire for writing her questions and then sitting patiently through this, essentially of this. Um, I think if you rush, you may get some of the things off of the game, and our next meeting is on the 30th of September, we'll be looking at the core grant programme, the vision for a sustainable carbon licence feature in the district, and our transport policies and the way we do the carbon reduction. So thank you all, I've called a meeting to a close. Thank you.